Thank you all so much for being here. I'd like to call this moving to order. We'd like to approve the agenda. Is there anything that anybody would like to add to the agenda today? What do you think? All right, excellent. Thank you. We'd like to open public comments. Doesn't seem as though there's anyone. Do we have anyone else on here?
Just Sam.
Okay, Sam. Probably then don't.
I don't think you need to read it if there's nobody here to give it.
All the rules. Okay, so we're gonna move past that. Excellent. So the first thing on the agenda is to put forward a vote to put the automotive program on hold for this year. And just in full disclosure, so we did not have any applicants that were qualified for the position. And we had eight students signed up for that and gave all eight students the opportunity to choose diesel or to choose something else. So they got first dibs on whatever they wanted. And so I have posted, continued all summer it was posted. I've been reposting, still looking for someone. So if anybody knows of somebody who is willing to, the tricky part is, who's willing to go to school to do the teacher prep program, the CTTEP program, and has a background in automotive mechanics. If anyone knows someone in that position that would like to do that, that position is open. And so now will be open for next school year, but I would look to hire anytime. So if anyone has any connections there. So what does that involve? The program, the training, so it's training over four years specific to becoming a teacher. So it's teacher skills. And it's nights and weekends through VTSU. And the school district pays for the majority of this program. And it's, it's like one weekend a month, I believe. And every Monday, there's a class. And so you go through different modules. So it's like teacher prep one, teacher prep two, three, four. And then it's special education law and best practices in education. And then there's like a portfolio and a project based assessment at the end. And then, once you complete your portfolio, then you apply for your license.
And that's for the tax form?
No, completely separate. It's a C. No, it sounds similar. CTEP. And it's the teacher prep program through VTSU. This is who we contract with. So, so I would like to put forth a request for a vote to put automotive technology on hold due to not having a licensed applicant until next school year, when hopefully, well before then, we will have a licensed applicant who will accept this position.
Um, we'll definitely put the automotive tech program on hold until next year.
Thank you.
Motion, your second. Now, any discussion?
So I'm just curious. So the plan will be to continue to advertise?
Oh, yeah, it's done up. Yeah. Yes.
You remember, and that one was a little late in the year last year, when we got the resignation for that.
Yeah, it was right at the end of the school year. But yeah, it's been posted since then. And like, I've reposted it many times. Yeah, we had one person who seems somewhat interested, but then didn't want to, wasn't like interested in the schooling part. And so that's kind of where you ran into things. So, yes.
Does the person who is applying for the position have to be, complete their teaching course before they can start?
No.
So as long as they're active in that teaching?
Yes.
Program, they can be hired?
Yeah.
Want me to talk about the apprenticeship license? Yep. So what happens in a case like that is we apply for an apprenticeship license through the state. And that's that four-year program at the technical center that we go up and we get talked about.
So you have to continuously take those classes. So let's say you wanted to stop at some point and then just continue to work here, but you didn't finish. You can't do that. So you have to continuously prove that you're taking the classes. And they keep track. And they come here and they observe. They observe the teacher in their program and then they meet with us. And then they also get assigned a mentor who comes to the school. So they're very integrated into our school, once the teacher signs up for the program. And like, we work together and like, make sure the teacher stays on track with their credits and classes, their sets mix in.
So.
Go ahead.
Very detailed.
Okay.
But as if someone were interested, say they've worked for twenty, fifteen, twenty years in the automotive industry. Maybe they're.
This might be a great job for them.
Happens sour in your eyes. Do they get any credit for?
For their work experience? Yeah, they do. To some degree, absolutely. So, yes, is your answer. Did you know somebody? Maybe pass this along if you do. Okay, that'd be great. Yeah, so we are pretty set for this year because everyone is happily in a program.
Right.
But definitely looking to hire for next year and like, get this set up. So if there's anybody who's looking to move out of the active industry, that'd be great. Yeah.
If you were to find somebody next week?
Yeah.
Can they do the first year of that program even though they're not working?
What a good question. I don't know. That's a great question. Do you have any insight on that?
I would imagine that they could. I think the problem is, is they won't be covered by our school contract. So they wouldn't be eligible for their tuition reimbursements.
That would be a downside for sure.
Yep. No, it'd be covered by our master.
If they were like a paraprofessional, perhaps, something like, do you maybe know somebody that might be? Oh, you look so like hopeful there. Like, I thought maybe.
We've had to be very creative.
Yes. Yeah, I understand that. Okay. Well, thank you for your support. And as soon as we can, as soon as we're able to hire somebody and like, get that program back open next year, that is a high priority. I fully expect it to be backed up and running. And as long as we have an applicant, you guys don't want me teaching them, that's for sure. I think this is the break line, maybe.
I have a question to see. We had paused the early childhood.
Yes.
Are we gonna?
So you've got the motion on the table at the moment, Ann.
That's right. That's right. Sorry, sorry. We got a motion.
You got the motion, you had a second, you're into discussion. Now you want to wrap up discussion, it seems like.
Yes.
Any more discussion?
Oh, yes. Okay.
Then you're gonna call for the vote.
Okay. Oh, yes. Call for a vote to put the automotive technology program on hold.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Thank you.
So it's unanimous. There you go.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so now, we're gonna, we're gonna get to what you just asked about in this next piece, if you don't mind. Yeah. Yes. So I'm very, very excited to tell you that our total enrollment this year, right now, as of this morning, is a hundred and one students. So very pleased with that. And we are operating with a hundred and one students with far three fewer programs. Actually, wait, auto, health. Dental, yes, thank you. And education. So four fewer programs, but we still have a hundred and one students, which is really great. And one of the really wonderful things, and that's actually kind of halfway down this page. It, I mentioned the additional RTCC bus updates. I'm gonna actually jump to that and I'll come back to the enrollment. But the great thing about our new bus system is that we were able to get a bus, which is called the RTCC bus, that picks students up at CBCC. And then, we have thirty-six kiddos that are getting on that bus every day and coming to RTCC that are still over students who weren't able to, you know, they were full on some of the programs at CBCC. So they're able to get on the bus and come here. That has been working out so well. It's been, it's really been such a blessing. And the students have, they're amazing. And they're so lovely and grateful to be in a program. And we're so glad it's happened. So I wanted to let you all know that that is going really, really well. Yeah, it's been great. Okay, so now back to it. So with the programs that we have, which is mine programs, we have a hundred and one students. As we talked about, auto is on hold, returning next year. Education, I wrote here, the future is uncertain because I just haven't had any interest. However, I have had interest from students in health careers. And so there is an active plan that we are working on. In fact, we are interviewing a LNA, an LNA tomorrow for the health careers program for next year. We're very excited. We're working with the board of nursing, who, the chair of the board also looks for Gifford. And so he's been really, really helpful in helping us connect with a person who might be interested in doing this job. She'll be coming in tomorrow. And we'll get to meet with her and see what she's looking for and see if that winds up with what we're able to offer. But it's a great opportunity to get healthcareers back up and running into know ahead of time that that is the case. There's also a possibility, if she's interested, and if all things work out lovely, I'm not sure, you know, it's a possibility right now. We might even be able to offer an LNA program to adults in the community. So I think that would be very helpful to Gifford and other healthcare providers in this region, if we can make that work. But it really depends on the candidate and kind of what they're looking for. And if that matches what we're looking for. So I'm very excited about that. And we've been working on that throughout the summer. And, you know, this month, and just trying to kind of get that all together. And the consultant that I'm working with from the board of nursing is going to help us build a curriculum that that not only allows students to get the LNA, but medical assistance is the plan, and the possibility of maybe one other health careers associated, industry recognized credential that they can work with. So that is, that's the good news there. And dental assisting was closed and it will remain closed. So that's, that's where we are with our programs. Of course. Yes.
There hasn't been interest. Does that mean there hasn't been interest in anybody applying to teach it?
I, yeah, interest by the students. I think in total, I had two students. And those same two students were also interested in health careers. So I definitely ate in order to qualify for state funding through the Perkins Grant. So I'm really looking for high interest programs. And I, as we talked about last year, the idea of closing some lower interest programs that we can concentrate on growing some higher interest programs. And that really did happen. So that's really exciting. As an example, our electrical program is full. I mean, it's bursting at the seams. Pre-tap can have up to twenty-one students. And I think, yeah, now we're at nineteen. And I've got three more students that are gonna be touring this week or next week. So I think we're gonna get to twenty-one. That program is busting at the seams. Construction is growing. At twelve, you know, we would like to see them to get to sixteen if possible, which is the max for a single teacher in the room. You would a teacher and a parry could have up to ten. But we've got electrical, diesel is at seventeen. And and construction is, and pre-tap are like, starting to get really masked out. Which is a really good thing because none of those programs were, had members anywhere close to that last year, where we were before. So we're definitely spending a lot of energy on, on the programs that have high demand. And it's proving to be. Yeah. Um, I have some new staff. And so I was just going to announce that and talk a little bit about them. So we have a new diversified agriculture teacher, and her name is Annie Massey. She's doing a really wonderful job so far. She is the, was the farm-to-school teacher at the elementary schools. So I don't know if you maybe know her through that. But we were able to get her on staff. And so she's doing a lot with, she's doing like, a lot of interesting things. But they were out like harvesting plants to make homemade tea the other day. They're gonna be building a farm stand. And working with construction and electrical to make the farm stand. And then selling things that they've grown and made. And then they're partnering with culinary. And so there's a lot of like interdisciplinary lessons going on. They made salsa with pre-tap this week and culinary. So things are definitely getting collaborative in the best way with that new teacher. So it's wonderful. We have Patrick Connolly, who comes from us from VTSU, who is teaching pre-tap. Ash Daniels, she is our new school counselor. We have Toby the Shaw, who is our new special education paraprofessional, which we haven't parent special in a very long time. And he's a former NIT instructor in welding. And so he's been going around and teaching some lessons to the other programs' students about welding. And we have Steven Geno, who is, oh, you know what? It says diesel paraprofessional. He's actually the pre-tap paraprofessional. I made a mistake here. He was originally going to be diesel, but now he's pre-tap. And Steven is a, is a business owner, farmer in the community. And he's extremely knowledgeable on so many topics. And so he brings definitely a really interesting mindset and just like lots of personal lived experience to the pre-tap program, which is really, really cool. So we have lovely staff. We are still hiring for a student services coordinator. And we are interviewing a candidate Monday, which is great. In the meantime, we are splitting the full-time position among two special educators that are each half-time. And so it's been interesting, rather than having one special educator working with the whole school, we actually have a really great team now because we have two licensed special educators each working half-time. And then we have our school counselor, who's participating in all of our IEP and file for meetings. And then we have a special education paraprofessional. So now there's four adults who are like wrapping around kids and helping them, you know, with all of the necessary things in their plan. So that's, that's been really nice. But I am still looking for a full-time student services coordinator. So like I said, interviewing on Monday and updating you next time. If I have news on that. Automotive instructor, definitely looking for that. And we are hiring for a attendance secretary or front desk person. And let's see, our lady who is in that role right now, she will be finishing up on Friday. So I do have to, one applicant, one interested person who's like asking a lot of good questions about that. And so there's also interviews Friday and next week. So I'm hoping I'll be fully, fully, fully staffed very soon. Got a lot, I'm gonna use kind of that, which is a good thing. Talked about the bus. It's going very, very well. And then the individual breakdown of program numbers is right below. So we've got agriculture, nine kiddos. That has been a really interesting program because as our new teacher has been getting to know people, people have been asking to transfer into her program. So that, that's pretty cool. Her numbers are looking great. FWD, which we lovingly refer to as four-wheel drive, is fabrication welding and design. They are at eight. They were previously, I think we went into this year with them at three or four. So just in the last two weeks, I think students are starting to see all the cool things that's happening in that program. And there are, there is welding IRC in there. And a lot of kids are interested in welding. And that teacher has been going into other programs such as agriculture and will be going into many programs and teaching them about welding. So he's kind of getting out there more. And he taught the entire ag class and the teacher. Was that yesterday or today? How to weld, you know, introductory. It was very cute. They're all very excited. So they've got eight. So they are in a really good place. Construction, twelve, the few ones too, they had three. By the end of the year. So they've grown a lot. And I think part of the reason for that two-part reason, one is that they're building tiny houses. So we bought supplies to build three tiny houses this year. And we bought trailers that are specifically made to have tiny houses built on top of them and attached on to them. And they're also going to build the farm stands that Ag is going to use on a trailer. And so that exciting project or multiple projects combined with the fact that we had some overflow of students coming from outside of our district made for a very nice class size. Criminal justice is at five. And they are doing a lot of really interesting things with drones and the part one oh seven IRC, drone IRC that can be used, you know, well beyond the criminal justice career, but it's also something that's used by realtors and construction industry, photography, you name it. There's a lot that you can do with that. But criminal justice is working hard on growing. And they're going to be participating in competitions that is gonna be able to allow them to showcase their skills and get their name out there as they compete. And they're, they're great. They were walking around today with their utility belts on. And they're doing all of these exercises that you have to be able to do if you get into the police academy. And he's really preparing them for police academy, really. So I think that their numbers are gonna grow as time goes on and as word gets out. Culinary has nine wonderful students who made all that food there, except for the cookies which Colin brought them to. Please help yourself. Diesel is, like I said, bursting at the seams at seventeen. At some point, it might be an interesting thing to think about a second diesel program. There's so much interest. I just had to have a conversation with someone today that there wasn't going to be room for them. There are several people on the list. It's very popular. And we're one of two programs in remote. So that's an area of potential growth for us. Digital media is at seven. They're just on the cusp. There was a student just today who was like, maybe I'll transfer in there. Then they would have had eight, which would have been great. But they decided, that student decided like, they're gonna stick with their program that they're in now for junior and senior. They're gonna go to digital media. So they get two sets of IRCs, which is cool. But they're really close to eat. And I think that they will get to eat at some point this year. Electrical has fifteen students. Many of them are out on co-op. And we were able, because we had paused some programs, we had a few with two extra classrooms. And so electrical and construction now have their own lab space, as well as their own classroom space, which has completely like leveled up their game. Like, they have a very classroom-focused area where they are learning like the logistics of what they're doing and like, thinking about blueprints and like, just really focusing on academics in there. And then they have an enormous lab space now that they are not sharing with their desks, where they can build inside, no matter what the weather. And I just think it's been a really positive thing. I think the teacher is enjoying it. The construction teacher has the same thing. They have their own space too. And it's been, it's been really good. I think it's really added to the professionalism of the program and, and, you know, really shown the students that we're very serious about, not only your academics, but your skilled trades too, and giving you the space to do those things that you need to do. And then lastly, pre-tap, I haven't seen a pre-tap class like this ever, since I've been here. It's soon to be at twenty-one. We have students coming from the U thirty-two district, CBCC's catchment area, our area. The kids are amazing. They're meshing and melding together, team building, and just are becoming like a nice community within their classroom. And it's been really, really wonderful to see that. We have two adults in that room, just because it's such a large class. And that's going very, very well. And so there's your total hundred and one students and growing. It says programs in yellow, but this printed in black and white. So it's G and D. So criminal justice was five and digital media was seven. They're below the statement. And only that we're looking for, for Perkins funding, but we're working on it. Yeah.
Question.
Of course.
You know, you mentioned diesel, that, you know, it's really, it's going really well. And you may, you know, you're contemplating maybe. I'm, I'm wondering, you, are the programs generic enough that? Because I'm wondering if you look at sort of projections of the amount of diesel mechanics that, that economists are foreseeing. And I haven't looked at that data in a long time, but is that an area where?
I drive a diesel.
It's an area of.
Definitely.
And jump in there. It's a good question.
Kingsbury. So Kingsbury, they do a lot of excavation. They're a pretty big company in central Vermont. They told me that they, they're looking everywhere for diesel technicians. And they want a master diesel technician. They're willing to pay that person upwards of a hundred thousand dollars. They're, they have nationwide headhunters. There's a huge.
Absolutely.
When they come out of our program, are they ready to enter the workforce or do they have to go onto a trade school?
They're, they're ready to start. There are trade schools for it, but they are ready to go. Do you want to talk about the IRCs they got?
Yeah, sure. So they get, they get five. So for the diesel program, we get five entry-level ASE certifications that have a medium heavy duty trucks. That student would be able to go into a shop and do basic tasks. And then, from there, our advisory board has told us that they'll kind of take it from there and showcase certain proficiencies. I mean, even getting to get all the licenses. And then if they want to, they can always play the course over at Vermont Tech to really understand diesel and go the extra mile. There's also in-house training programs through Caterpillar. In-house training programs. John Beer. So they have very, yeah, they have very program-specific modules. But they oftentimes train within the corporations. So that's kind of what they do.
Okay, yeah. It's a very good question. I'm glad you asked. There's such demand. It just.
Diesel's getting more complicated than regular gas engine now, because now they're using diesel engines as a generator source to power electric engines on heavy, heavy logging equipment. And because you get way more torque from an electric, but you need the longevity of a
The diesel engine.
Yeah, of a diesel. So it's, it's, and sometimes a lot of Canadian logging companies run diesel to electric.
Thank you for talking. So, yes, is your answer. Yes. Yeah, thank you so much for that. Yeah, it's really exciting. There's just so much excitement around that program. It's, it's all summer. It's been like, I want diesel, diesel, diesel. I think not only are there great God prospects, but there's, there's a really great teacher who's, you know, had a lifetime of work in the field and just loves teaching. And I think that all of that combines makes for a really great program, you know? So, yeah, thank you for asking that. So, new projects. I talked about the tiny houses. We're so excited about the tiny houses. We don't know, like, by what, in what way or how we will be marketing them, selling them, but they're blessed. They're being made to sell as homes, or people might want to use them as an office in their backyard, or they might want to have a Airbnb or something like that. You know, there's a million different uses for a tiny house. And they're gonna be so beautiful. They spent a lot of time last year planning out what they were gonna look like. And they're gonna be larger-sized tiny houses. And still kind of some trailer, but like, the larger-sized trailers, they're really gonna be beautiful. And our farm stand, once that is built, we're hoping to sell all kinds of things out there. You know, we're seeing Christmas wreaths at Christmas time, food, canned items, items that we grow in our garden out back. Things that culinary makes pies. Also, on number three are takeaway meals, hoping that those will be available to be picked up at the farm stand. So those are coming back. Those have been gone for a few years, but people have been asking about them. And those were very popular. So our culinary program will be doing twice a month to go. So it'll be great.
A little note, they may or may not know, if you go out twelve A. So pass the fire station headed, headed toward Braintree. On the left, there's a little purple tiny house.
Oh, okay.
That was the one that was built by. That was the one that was built by, I think, pre-tapped the first.
Yes, a while ago, yeah.
I know the gal who, who lives in it and she loves it. So anyway.
That's really sweet. Oh, I didn't realize that was.
You might want to just let your students know.
I will.
There is actually someone who's living in one that I forget when they did it.
I know it was before my time.
I thought I remember.
Okay, that's really cool. It's purple.
Someone is using it as a home. She loves it.
Thanks for sharing that. That's really nice. Yeah, and, and you know, it's going to be very affordable and.
Yeah.
And a nice little spot to live. So, yeah, we're really excited. It's just a win-win. Like we're teaching students how to build homes on a small scale and actually providing an opportunity for someone to be able to afford a house. That maybe, you know, we, this is more affordable than um, than a traditional home. So it's pretty exciting. Uh, upcoming events, I just put uh three things here that I wanted you guys to know about. So um, last year at the annual Women Can Do um Trades Conference at V T C or V T S U, sorry. And we participated in that where our students went, but also um, most of our programs tabled at that event. And that was really fun. We're going to do that again. Um, and our teachers and our students have been planning out like their individual demonstrations and what they're going to be doing. But that was a really fun event and so we will be there on October ninth.
That's a good question.
Yeah, of course.
Because, so in, in our S U, we actually had a community member come and express concerns. That it was biased against boys and um, people identify as boys. And so the lawyer advised us that it was a school sponsored, where we are giving a bus to them.
Yeah.
That the students that are not part of it shouldn't have any equal. And equal activity that's at the same level or caliber of.
Were you able to find an equal activity?
So we have to decide if it's a school sponsored event or if it's somebody that.
Oh, I see.
Rather than providing the bus, that if you provide the bus, it becomes a school. I can, yeah. It's, it's a equal opportunity thing.
Got it. Interesting.
The superintendent has reached out to Women Can Do to kind of see like, how was I going to do that to you this? It's a really good thing.
Well, there is another event that might be helpful um to you, which is, it's in the spring. I don't know if you guys. Was it Castleton last year or? The, or Sam, the event that um, you know, I did not attend that one. But everybody went on an all-school field trip. You guys all went to the trade um expo. I believe it was at Castleton. And it's in the spring. They're looking at me like they don't know.
That, that could, that would be something that women can go to as well.
Yes, but you could do something like, you know, maybe whoever wants to attend.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say something really quick.
Yeah.
Technically, I'm recording for the media, uh, the local access, but yes, it was like a trade show in Castleton.
Yeah.
There was big vendors and businesses and it's big around, they have free lunches and that kind of stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. I can't, off the top of my head, I can't do that.
Weird. I work here. I'm supposed to not talk to.
Oh, apologies. I'm so sorry.
I think it's just, it's something that has come up for us.
And so that makes sense.
And something that I think is going to probably stay on later is her.
Got you.
What, what opportunity can the boys who are going, that they have an equal experience?
I wonder if maybe we could help with that. Maybe students could come visit our T C C. I don't know if that's something that.
I mean, but I'm also thinking for our T C C.
Oh, so I think we're different in that situation because we, a big focus for us is um, is underrepresented youth. And so our Perkins funding requires us to report out on um, how we make tech accessible. To underrepresented youth. And this is one of the reasons why we do that. So that is tied to our Perkins grant. So I think that's not um, something that's a concern from our point of view. Because we are supposed to do, you know, today's stuff, expose it to non-traditional students. But um, yeah, do you want to do anything with your students and have them come down and do like a special advice?
We're, we're working on this.
Okay.
And I just, I just want to bring it up because I don't, I didn't know if it's also applicable here. And just in.
Thank you.
FYI, this is something that has.
Got it. All right, I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, the next thing I was going to say is we are um, going to be participating in the uh, the carving of three hundred pumpkins. For the um, Fall Pumpkin Walk on September twenty-sixth to twenty-eighth. Um, and so that is, this is a really fun activity for us. And um, all the students are each going to carve three and we'll have our three hundred pumpkins carved. And so if you guys attend that event, um, those will be carved by our T C C students. We're excited about that. And our annual winter market will be happening on November twenty-first from ten to one P M. And our teachers have been actively working on planning what they are going to be making, building, selling, creating for this event. And it gives us um, an opportunity to talk about marketing, to talk about uh, the design and creation of a product. Um, talking about, you know, how we're going to, what we're going to charge and how, you know, all of the pieces that go into it. Um, so it's a really fun event. Plus, it's just fun before the holidays um, to have a nice day where our T C C is open for the public. And we have, you know, cider and wreaths and gifts for the holidays and things like that. So please, if you can attend, if that's what happens, it'd be great.
It's still daytime.
It is.
Open in all in the evening or do people order? Are they going to pop a box or?
Order, like wreaths?
Right.
We always do sales beforehand. Like we do it on Facebook.
You do?
Yeah, yeah. And right, and the farming. Yeah, and so we don't do anything at night because the students aren't there.
Right.
And they're the ones who made it and will sell it. So that's the charm. I'm sitting there with wreaths, not quite as wonderful as like all our cute students with their wreaths. So um, yeah, so that's that. So if you can make it, that'd be great. Um, and the last thing that I have on here is just, um, I, I kept this on for several meetings. I know like all last year it was on our agenda. Um, but if there is anyone from um, a public high school or service region that is. Um, not represented on the rap, um, we are looking for someone to do so. So this is an area of need. Um, and let's see if you skipped, yeah, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Would that be like Chelsea, Humber?
Yes, it could be.
Let's also our two districts. Take that.
Yeah. What is that about?
It's the trace part of there.
Oh, thank you.
It's the.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, sorry.
So um, that board meeting starts in twenty minutes. And so Superintendent Craig, he's going to put it on the agenda.
Oh. Thank you.
As I said, it's, it's in Orange or Washington on these nights at six o'clock.
Yeah.
Um, and then.
But we could have someone on a Google Meet like Sam's.
And then you'll um, bring up the key.
Hmm. Great. Thank you so much. That would be so appreciated. Thank you. Um.
And I'll talk with. The White River Valley District and I'll talk with, I'll talk with Superintendent Kinnarney again.
Yeah, thank you. Um, okay, I think I should have spoken. Number three. I feel like I have to look at number three again. Sorry about that. Um, number four is in compliance. Um.
Number three was the one. They kind of addressed one and three.
Oh, so sorry. I got a little confused there. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, very good. All right. Are there any questions or any thoughts or ideas on anything else that we can?
So, um, or your folks or Sam or Colin and Debs up to?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's right.
And she works at Denver.
Yes.
Yeah.
Nurse at Denver, yes. Yes. Anything else? Sam, anything you want to do? Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, very good. Thank you all so much for being here.